Good evening. West of Oconee County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, April the 2nd. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Justin Kerouac to lead us in the place of the flag. Please stand. Our first item of business will be to approve the agenda.
Make the motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is statements or remarks from citizens. This is for anything not on our agenda tonight. If you do wish to make a public comment on anything not on the agenda, we ask you to give us your name, where you live, and you will have only three minutes of speaking time.
Hi, my name is Victoria Cruz. Could you start my clock over, please? And you know me, I live here in Oconee County, and I have spoken before, but I, at the, now that we've come to the end of our legislative session, I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on some of the things that I have been concerned about and want to tell you about. At the last minute, it was even after midnight on Sunday day, a very important legis- election bill was passed, SB 189. And as is usually, usually the case on Sunday day, the, the election bills, all bills tend to look different, and this one definitely looked different. They combined a lot of good parts from other bills into this bill. What you will notice after that was that the, America, the AJC and all the major news networks are now setting their sights on Georgia, to sue Georgia if Governor Kemp signs this bill. And what they are most concerned about is something I have spoken to you about, Mr. Daniel, it's voter registrations. We are over-registered, over-registered in this county, not through the fault of the county, but through the fault of the leaders in the state. At one point in 2021, uh, 2020 going into the 2021 runoff, there were over 300 invalid registrations on the voter rolls. True the Vote tried to get some of those taken off by asking people in the counties to challenge voters, which is something they can do by law. And a very brave citizen in this county brought forth over 1,400 voter registration challenges. Unfortunately, Mark Elias and all the left-wing groups said they sent a letter to all the counties, 159, and said they would sue them. And so the challenge was made, and when the election board met, they were advised to dismiss them all without even looking at them. And that was the threat of lawsuit. Well, True the Vote, who sponsored all of those challenges, was sued. And that case went on until this year, and it was settled by Judge Steve Jones in federal court, saying that there was no voter disenfranchisement by True the Vote, who just wanted to challenge invalid registrations. In fact, SB 202 strengthened the law for voter challenges, and there are even more provisions in SB 189 to allow citizens to challenge invalid registrations, not voters. Invalid registrations which come through by the thousands from DMV and from all the other organizations that have been tasked by the current administration to register voters. So there are errors on the rules, and those need to be changed. Prepare for lawsuits because they will come, but don't give in, please.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anna Heimold, Oconee County resident. I've spoken about the library before, and I'm back again to speak further about it with some documents I found in research. The reason that I'm here is I know we've spoken about the library, and we've been told that our library is not a member of the American Library Association, the ALA, and I've done research, and I've actually provided a lot of this research to Mr. Daniel. First of all, is the Georgia Library Association Constitution, which was adopted in 1949, and it speaks to how the organization will be called the Georgia Library Association. And if you read further, it talks about the organizations under it, underneath it, and what it will do, how it will function. And it states it will be a chapter in the American Library Association. So that is the Georgia Library Association, under which we are a member. Also, if you go to the ALA chapter, which is the American Library Association chapter directory, this is all found, this is found on the website of the ALA. It states, this is the, the states that have ALA. Right here is Georgia Library Association, founded 1897. This is an ALA chapter. We are an ALA chapter. Next, if you look under Athens Regional Library System, Public Library Law, this is all accessible on the website. It states, "No public or private, private library shall enter into any agreement itself or jointly with any other library agency to exercise any power or engage in any action prohibited by the constitutional laws of this state." So the library constitution states that we are a member of GLA, which is a member of the ALA. This is on the Pines Library website. And lastly, if we are not a member of the ALA, like I'm told, under the Pines Library system, online, if you go to Collections and Management Policy, which talks about how we maintain our collections, let's see, it states right here, "The Athens Regional Library System Board of Trustees has adopted the American Library Association's position on intellectual freedom as stated in the ALA Bill of Rights, and the Athens Regional Library System Board of Trustees has adopted the Freedom to Read Statement from the ALA and the Freedom to View Statement, ALA maintaining that these freedoms are guaranteed by the First Amendment to the United States of the Consta- US Constitution, pardon me." So I'm here to question, if we are not a member of the ALA, why are we a member of a group at the state level that is a member of the ALA, actually a chapter of the ALA? And why do we have, why are we taking guidance from the ALA in our library system if we are not a member of the ALA? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So my understanding on that is we are not members of the Georgia Library Association either. That is, individuals of our employees may be members of these organizations. Taxpayer money is not used for any membership in that. Again, if you can bring me the, show me something where taxpayer monies is going to these organizations, I'll issue you an apology. No, that's it. No, ma'am, your time is, your time is done. Have a seat. We'll be glad to talk to you after the meeting. Anyone else?
Hi, Fatma Giran. I live in Rockinwood, and it's my first time, but I just wanted to say I really do appreciate the library. I think we should leave it to the professionals and the families, the parents, who decide, who make a decision what books their kids check out from the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Andrea Wellitz, and I live in Oconee County on the statum side. And I just want to thank you all for the work that you're doing regularly, so I appreciate it. I also appreciate you giving the state of the county address and also having Valerie come and talk to you at your recent meeting, Valerie Bell, with the library. And just providing you more details on what they're doing to address concerns in the community and, and also just to thank you for not interfering with programming at the library, because that's up to the professionals at the library. That's their job. That's what they're hired to do. And I feel like our library is really inclusive of all people in our community, which I appreciate, and I hope that continues. Thank you.
Good evening. Julie Mock. Obviously, I disagree with the last two speakers. We've been in communication, and there are real problems at our library. There were a couple people who emailed me shortly after it opened about some displays in the children's section with gender-bending books that, that people were offended by, and you had indicated that there might be a video, a security video, when the library employees said that it was not them that did the display. It must have been a parent who came in and did the display. And you indicated there might be security videos saying who, who did it. And I haven't heard back from you on that. I was wondering if there was anything like that.
Thank you.
Is that a yes or no?
No, I did not ask you. I'm not, I'll be glad to talk to you. You got my phone number. You got my email. We'll talk.
I've emailed. You haven't responded, but I'll follow up.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Any statements or remarks from commissioners?
No sir.
We want to take a minute to mention the passing of Ms. Sue Roach. She was the first female elected to be a county commissioner in Oconee County. She served from 1977 to 1980. Y'all remember her family in prayer. Also, as, as most of you know, there's a pretty serious accident with a fatality at Snow's Mill Road, State Route 53. Just want to kind of give an update on that intersection, what's been going on there. We approached the Department of Transportation in 2019 about partnering with us on two intersections. That one, we want to get our deputy out of the roadway, plus the amount of traffic that goes through there. Also at Race Church Road and Malcolm Bridge Road at State Route 53. If you're familiar with both of those, they're pretty tough intersections. GDOT was very receptive to it. They went back and did their background investigations to make sure they could get the proper funding for it. In 2020, at the end of 2020, we were able to get a design consultant onboard. And they started sometime in 2021 on the, this was late 2020. I remember what all happened with, in 2020, it got kind of hard to get proposals back in. So the project is at State Route 53 and Snow's Mill Road. The design is complete. Right-of-way has been approved, and we're in the process of purchasing that right-of-way now. When that right-of-way is completed, the schedule is showing now that the contract will be, or bids will be open in the fall of 2024 with construction in 2025. And then roughly behind that, the Race, Race Church Road roundabout is running almost 12 months behind that on the process. Hopefully this time next year, we'll have, be well into the construction of the roundabout. Also, we'll announce our town hall meeting on April 16th. We'll begin at 6:00 PM here in this very room. Also, got some new faces here. We have ballot questions on the ballot for this time for increasing the homestead exemption for everybody from 2,000 to 5,000, and then in 2035 going to $10,000 on that homestead exemption. Well, making assessment freezes automatic at age 65, and additional $10,000 homestead at age 75. There are 10 questions that are required to be answered on your ballot in order to make any of this happen, and all 10 of those ballot questions must pass. With that, we'll go into the approval of the minutes for March 5th and March 26th.
Make a motion to approve the March 5th, March 26th meetings as submitted.
Second. We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have a very special group we'd like to recognize for a lot of time and dedication they put in for Oconee County, and we're going to ask Mark Saxon to read that proclamation for us.
Oconee County Library Friends Day. Whereas, the Oconee County Library Friends endeavor to promote an appreciation for books and the enjoyment of reading. And whereas, the Oconee County Library Friends strive to increase public awareness and use of the Oconee County Public Library. And whereas, the Oconee County Library Friends work tirelessly to support the library staff in providing high-quality service and programs for our library patrons through fundraising, volunteering, advocating library services, and promoting literacy throughout the county for the enhancement of the intel- intelligent, intellectual, recreational, and educational climate of Oconee County. And whereas, the Oconee County Library Friends have donated many thousands of dollars to the Oconee County Library, as well as organizing and hosting many events which spotlight the wonderful literacy resources for our area and the library in particular. And whereas, the Oconee County Library Friends played an invaluable role in assisting Oconee County Library staff for the 2024 move to a larger and more modern building located at White Park. Now therefore, we, the Oconee County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, as Oconee County Library Friends Day in Oconee County, Georgia. Signed, John Daniel, Oconee County Board of Commissioners.
Good, uh, get all the friends that are here to come on up front with us. All right, the next item is to move into our zoning and action zone zoning matters. Our first item is rezon request P 24-0010. John and Donna Washington. This is a rezon from AG to AR, 4.83 acres at 5671 Hog Mountain Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is P 21, P 24-0010, John and Donna Washington, applicants and owner. This is located along Hog Mountain Road, Parcel A 03013A. It's currently zoned AG in country-states character area, and they're requesting a rezon 4.83 acres from AG to AR. You have these plats in your packet, and this is the concept plan showing the, the two-acre tract and the 2.8-acre tract. And staff recommends approval with our one standard condition. Planning Commission also recommends approval with the same condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner. Did you want to add anything to that? Did you want to add anything to what Guy just said? Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And any questions from commissioners? Will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve rezon P 24-0010. John and Donna Washington rezon from AG to AR, 4.83 acres, 5671 Hog Mountain Road, residential with one condition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve rezon request P 24-0010 with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is rezon request P 24-0011. It's a rezon from AG to AR 3. It's 23.11 acres at 2,300 New High Shells Road and 2250 New High Shells Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is rezon P 24-0011, Kristen Shea and Thomas and Yunko, applicants and owners. This is parcels B 06034A, 034AB, and 034ATTES along New High Shells Road. It's currently zoned AG in the country-states character area. And again, the request is a rezon of the 23.11 acre property from AG to AR 3. This is the existing plat that you have in your packet. This is the proposed concept plan showing the five lots, slightly larger version. And staff recommends conditional approval with our one standard condition. Number two, the proposed five lots shall be limited to a total of three driveways accessing New High Shells Road, with shared driveways being incorporated into the final design and general conformists with the concept plan dated 2/16/24. Shared driveway easements shall be shown on the plat as required, and a one-foot no, no access easement shall be shown on lots fronting on New High Shells Road, except where they are shared driveway easements or existing driveways. Number three, the location of the ingress egress easement for a proposed lot number five shall follow the existing drive, or the drive shall be realigned to the easement. There shall be a one-foot no access easement for lots two and three on the side bordering Lot 4 unless the pay, private access drive standards are met, meeting UDC Section 101207. And number four, all dwelling units shall have facades that consist primarily brick, stone, stucco, or lap siding consisting of painted wood lap or fiber cement board siding. No vinyl or metal siding shall be allowed. Each single-family detached unit shall include at least a two-car garage. The planning commission recommended approval with the same conditions. Thank you.
Now, we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner?
Hi, I'm Kristen Shea, New High Shells Road, Thompson Eko. I just thought I'd share, our motivation is estate planning. We have two college-age children, and they may want to move back here one day. We have elderly parents who may need to be here when they need to be taken care of, and at the moment, we have no plans to build.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve rezon P 24-0011, Thomas and Nico and Kristen Shea. Rezon from AG to AR 3, 23.11 acres, 2,300 New High Shells Road and 2250 New High Shells Road, residential with the four conditions.
Aye. We have a motion and a second to approve rezon request P 24-0011 with four conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. The next item will be special use P 24-0008. This is Fellowship Baptist Church. It's a special use approval for community-scale churches, 10.02 acres at 1820 Race Church Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is special use P 24-0008, Fellowship Baptist Church. It is parcel A 05013D along Race Church Road. It's currently zoned AG in the country-states character area. And again, the request is a special use approval for a community-scale church to allow the expansion of the current church campus to accommodate 500 people in the primary area of assembly. This is the existing plat. This is the concept plan. It's in your application packet. And these are the representative photos submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. And then number four, all new or renovated buildings shall meet the requirements of UDC Section 306 standards for non-residential uses, including but not limited to the architectural requirement. The building facade shall have an exterior material consisting of the following: brick or brick face, natural or manufactured stone or artificial stone panels, stucco, ephes, glass, wood siding, or fiber cement lap siding with metal accent material not to exceed 20% of each building face. The planning commission recommended approval with the same conditions, adding, number five, the amount of ephes used is not to exceed 20% of, of each building face. Thank you.
Justin Greer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Justin Greer, Pittman and Greer Engineering. Thank you, Guy. I don't have very much to add. Just looking at doing a building expansion, cleaning up some of the parking pavement, adding some outdoor lawn areas for gathering and assembly. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the special use? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners?
I got one. Mr. Greer, do you guys have any objections to the, the addition that planning commission had?
Would you not? Any other questions? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve special use P-24-0008 Fellowship Baptist Church, special use approval for a community-scale church, 10.02 acres, 1820 Race Church Road, neighborhood-scale church with four conditions.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second to approve special use P-24-0008 with four conditions. Any discussion?
Was there four?
It was four on the original and the Planning Commission added 20%.
I just saw, I just looked at the four.
All right, so you want to modify yours as a motion?
Yeah, I will modify it. Go to five.
You all right with that? One second. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve special use P-24-0008 with five conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is variance P-23-0282, Matt Godby. It's to reduce the side yard setback, 0.75 acres at 1719 Shoals Creek Way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is variance P-23-0282, Matt Godby, applicant and owner. This is located along Shoals Creek Way in Boulder Springs subdivision. This is parcel A 06E055. It's currently zoned AR in the country-states character area. And the property owner is requesting a variance from the UCC Section 40901 and Table 4.1 to reduce the minimum required side setbacks from 15 feet to 0.21 feet for an existing single-family dwelling. This is the concept plan that you have in your application packets, a slightly larger version, showing the encroachment to the property line of 0.21 feet. Staff recommends that a conditional approval that does meet the conditions to grant the special exception variance with our one standard condition. And number two, a variance is granted to reduce the required left side setback from 15 feet to 0.21 feet in the immediate area of the setback encroachment only as shown on concept plan and as-built survey dated 1/23/2024 by James Hall, RLS, Patrick and Associates, Inc. Thank you.
Now, we're here from the owner. Nothing to add? Does anybody else wish to speak for the variance? Does anyone wish to speak against? We'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve variance P-23-0282 as submitted.
Second.
With the two conditions?
With the two conditions.
We have a motion and a second to approve variance request P-23-0282 with two conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from the consent agenda?
No.
We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Do you have need of a quick executive session related to land acquisition?
Make a motion to adjourn the executive session for a land acquisition.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Saxon?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
We are adjourned.